Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. We have one appointment for the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board of Directors. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 2002, Resolution Appointing Shawn Luther as a Member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board of Directors with a Term to Expire, September 20th, 2027.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Luther, we'll turn it over to you. If you could introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then why you're interested in serving on the board.
Sure thing. Thanks, Councilman. My name is Shawn Luther. I'm a resident of your district in the Bluff neighborhood in Uptown. Currently serve as the President and CEO of the Innovate PGH Partnership, which includes our work in the Pittsburgh Innovation District, which is centered in Oakland and also connects into a number of adjoining areas, including supporting the Eco Innovation District in Uptown. Before that, I was the Executive Director of Invision Downtown, which is, I think, the real intersect with the parking authority's work. During my term at Invision, we did significant research into the existing and future supply for the authority, as well as the private supply for the Golden Triangle and the neighborhoods that are adjoining the Central Business District. As a sometimes driver, but more often user of the street as a pedestrian, a cyclist, a diner, I'm really interested in supporting council's vision of how we can use the public right of way and support the authority in its mission to serve the citizens of the city.
Thank you. I really don't have many questions. Again, as we sort of joked before we started, I didn't realize you were being one appointed, so I'm very familiar with you and obviously your work. Just curious, one question though, obviously, it's more than likely that our parking garages, the parking authority garages, will probably never be full at their full capacity like they once were. But with that being said, the revenue goes to help support our pension for the city of Pittsburgh. So just curious about your thoughts around how to potentially better utilize garages, how to tie in public transportation with our parking system, just any thoughts there?
Yeah, I think it's a really critical time to be thinking about structured parking as an asset for the city, not just as a revenue stream, but as an opportunity to be a really flexible and future-oriented opportunity to drive revenue and also to increase support for the business communities that rely on that structured parking. Morning, Councilman. And so, one, I think there's an opportunity for the authority, and certainly don't have any specific thoughts or suggestions on this before the appointment, to think about supporting visitor traffic, resident traffic, and neighborhood services in addition to a traditional nine-to-five capacity, which has driven a lot of the revenue in the CBD and in Oakland thus far. And other opportunities with ride hailing, deliveries. I think the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has done a bunch of really interesting forward-looking work at how we can repurpose some of these fixed assets to support revenue and business operations for our business districts.
Thank you. One other sort of thought, it's not really a question, but before I turn it over to Councilman Wilson, is there's a company that they've done some stuff here locally. They've done one development in the Strip, and I think they're looking to do another one, where it would be helpful, and I'm not sure if the parking authority ever goes in this direction, but essentially what they do is, I think it may be called stacked, where essentially it's a revolving parking garage, where you can pull your car in, and then your car goes sort of up and around. So all of a sudden, what used to be three spaces can now accommodate basically however many you want, just depending on how high you want it to be. And as we're looking to do development, like along Center Avenue as a business corridor, and bringing back the New Granada Theater, things of that nature, parking is an extreme concern in terms of where you're going to get the parking, as well as the city, I think, will have to update its code around how much parking would require. But nonetheless, this system could then fill in small spaces to give you maximum flexibility, and it's basically a push of a button. You can go on your phone, it's like, oh, I need to get my car, and it'll start loading your car for you in 15 minutes. So just a thought in terms of how to become more creative as we move forward and have tighter, denser spaces. Councilman Wilson, do you want to, you don't have to respond, it was just a...
I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I do think it's an interesting concept.
Thank you.
You try to have him respond on the gumball, the gumball parking lot. Is that what it is?
So no, I can show you. It's actually very neat and pretty interesting. And I met with them again because we're trying to figure out how to solve for...
It's a company that does this?
Yeah, and they've done one, they've done it in a couple of different cities, but they've done one development here in the Strip, where in order to, they re, it was an old warehouse that they've turned into housing, but the zoning didn't allow, there wasn't no parking, but zoning required parking. And so the solution was to take the three spots behind the old warehouse and put this new system in that I think accommodated 30 cars on what would have been three spaces, because it goes vertical. And it's all, you can monitor it on your phone. It's an interesting system in terms of how to squeeze parking into places that otherwise you wouldn't be able to get, so.
I think previously, the cost of structured parking versus some of these more forward-leaning technologies like that have basically always pointed us towards conventional stacked, precast concrete garage. As those costs get more and more expensive, I think more creative solutions like that become not just cost competitive, but potentially economical.
Yeah, and the other benefit to it is it can always go away. Because you're just, it's not a permanent structure. So if and when you decided it was higher and better usage for that space, or you're doing more rideshare, things of that nature, then that system can just, it's like Legos, it can just come back down.
Yeah, I don't know how much, how many parking garages we'll be building here with the authority, but maintaining them and seeing what, like currently, we're doing a... They're doing a whole study to figure out all the property that they own, to figure what can be, you know, kept, what can be sold. And so, I mean, one of them is, you know, with the old garage on Penn, and right across from Kappa.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. So that's definitely coming up, you know? There's been some good conversations I had, I think, I think... Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Very, yes. I was actually, pre-pandemic, worked on the cultural trusts planning
Oh, really?
for that Eighth Street block. And at the time, we were referring to the Ninth and Penn Garage.
How were you working on that? You were at what position?
This is when I was at Invision Downtown, which is a subset of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership.
So you're like part, that was part of the Downtown Partnership?
Correct. Yeah, much of the work has been subsumed into the general day-to-day operation of the partnership on the mobility and infrastructure side.
I took over, well, shouldn't say it like that, through redistricting. It was, you know, I now represent part of Downtown. I feel like I learned something new every day about Downtown, just because there's, good thing it's not New York City.
It is an onion.
I learn something new every hour. But now, it's good to know. And so during that role, when you were in that role, you were familiar with that plan where they were going to do, what, housing on top?
Correct. Housing, it was a real compelling mixed-use plan. Housing, office, public space, as well as rebuilding the Ninth and Penn Garage, which would have remained the authority's role. At the time, we were thinking of that as the last best garage in downtown Pittsburgh. As, you know, pre-pandemic, we were starting to see trends that single occupancy vehicle for work start to reduce. Now, obviously, that flexibility has exacerbated with both fewer people coming to Downtown on a day-to-day basis, but many of the people who are continuing to come Downtown have shifted back to driving their own cars.
So what do you think? I think there's a real opportunity to do something there that doesn't involve a Pittsburgh Parking Authority-owned structure, but have you thought about big, usually we don't get into this in the interview, but have you thought about, you know, have you looked into the authority's, you know, finances recently, or just the state of parking in general in Pittsburgh?
I have not looked at the authority's finances recently. I would call myself a casual observer of the parking network, almost an addiction, rather than a professional habit.
Well, there's a lot of parking available, not just at the, you know, the public parking lots, but even the privately owned ones, so much so that I was just in a meeting recently. Councilman, you'll probably know what I'm talking about. Basically, you know, there's like now man it, there, people are striking deals with private garage owners for, you know, a certain amount of spots. If they're going to like build apartments in Downtown to do like a managed parking service, you know, potentially just like a valet for that new facility that would come in. As, so as like Downtown, you know, gets re-envisioned post-pandemic, be interested in the, you know, see what's actually even necessary for us to continue investing in public. I think there's a real opportunity, you know, at the curb and on the street. You know, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. I spent a lot of time revising the RPP legislation so that the... It's it with now, there's a person at Domi who does the studies to understand where and when we should expand. And there's different ways that people could tap into and say, hey, I want you to look into this. I want you to do a study for, do a parking study here to understand what will be needed. So I spend a lot of time doing that. Just want to know your thoughts on the curb side, like any, you know? Sometimes people want to serve because they're, they just feel compelled to serve. Just kind of wanted to know if you're doing it for that reason, or is it you just have this love for parking?
Unfortunately, I do have a strong love for parking, not often as a driver. I'm not a great parallel parker, and so predominantly, I'm not the one doing the parking myself.
So you're the one holding up traffic.
Yes, absolutely. And so predominantly, I will be on a bus to ensure the smooth traffic flow of the city. I do agree with you though, Councilman, that the curb is about more than just a parking exchange between someone and a car. It's a public-owned asset that is a really important catalyst to the business community, to everyone who's experiencing that street. And so I think the Parking Authority has been a really great and strong partner with many of our neighborhood business districts, including our work in Oakland at the Innovation District and our partners at the Business Improvement District there, to think about how we can support business operations, support visitor traffic, support residents, and also make sure that our streets are emblematic of the lifestyle that we want our neighborhoods to serve for their residents.
What do you think about the purple curbs?
I have lots of, really excited about the concept of pricing the curb below just a 15-minute interval of, you know, how I would stop at a curb and grab a cup of coffee. I think it's critical that we are forward-looking about how delivery drivers, and especially Uber Eats drivers and folks that are in the gig economy, are using those curbs and are being priced responsibly. I also think that there's some really interesting technology-oriented opportunities to improve the management of not just the purple curbs, but our loading zones and our paid parking as well. In my work in the innovation community, there's a number of startups locally that provide really interesting technology interfaces between apps and the parking system that I think we can look into.
Great. Yeah, I think there's a real opportunity. I think what's missing from the conversation, because I often hear, you know, why mess with the business? Why try and change? They've been working well for some time. I'm not sure where they're getting the information from, because whenever there was outreach to the businesses, they go, well, we can't get our deliveries. We're double parking, the car is in because someone's in our loading zone, and quite frankly, we're not, you know, we don't have the capacity to ticket every time someone's in some, you know, in the hundreds of loading zones that are in the city of Pittsburgh. You know, I would like the Parking Authority to then start, you know, going further out. I would like the Parking Authority to go further out to like do ticketing or, you know, warnings and then ticketing for like main corridors where people are parking their whole car on the sidewalk. And it's not, there's no rhyme or reason for it. Like you can, you can have the whole, you can have the car off the sidewalk so people can actually use the sidewalk. Or, you know, there are some streets where you have to put a couple of wheels up, like it's in some, you know, goat path on, you know, some side of the hill. Okay, I get it, emergency vehicles have to go through, but still just leave some room. Like you don't need to touch the sodding in your house. And I think there's a real opportunity to get Parking Authority out there instead of police. And so that's just been a struggle. So I'm like, and they, you know, they want us to enforce the loading zone that way. Well, I think with smart technology, there's an opportunity there. So it's good to hear that you're forward-thinking like that. I really don't have, you know, anything else. I'm looking for the opportunity to work with you on there. I think there's a good group of people. And I think Dave, I think he runs a tight ship, Dave Onorato. I'm not sure if you've met him before. And let's see, and then our president, Elizabeth Fishback. She does a good job. So just looking forward to adding to the team and making sure that, you know, this asset that we have here, this public, this public asset is protected, but also like works, you know, for Pittsburgh and works for everyone in Pittsburgh, because he has to work for the pension here. So that's always a balance, you know, because there is that agreement. And you understand how...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anything else? I don't have anything else for her to say.
Yeah, I strongly agree with all those points, Councilman.
After I just ramble, you know? I figured I'd get some points in there, talk about some frustrations about, you know, some issues that come up, but looking forward to working together. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, your vote will, excuse me, this bill will come up for vote next Tuesday. Can't say what's going to happen, but I feel pretty confident about it. So look forward to working with you.
Great, likewise.
If nothing else, the pre-agenda is adjourned. Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kale Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Mr. Chair, here.
Six members present, thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and preventing will not be permitted. I will also quickly state that while council fully respects everyone's ability to come before us and express their opinions, council does not intend to support the beratement, harassment, or intimidation of fellow speakers from one speaker to another. And with the work of Councilman Kraus, we're going to work to ensure that our rules reflect that. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. You're on mute, Ms. Mullen. So, Ms. Mullen, you're still on mute. I will move to the next speaker and come back to you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bell Soover. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. I'm an advocate, as we all are in the G.I.S., for uncensored, uninterrupted freedom of speech in public comment and in other public domains. Why was there no proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is there bias on this council against such people? I raise a question about this. I'm very concerned about it. There are many who are within this community in the city of Pittsburgh who view the city of Pittsburgh and the United States of America as an occupying entity. And that concern really needs to be addressed. Israel is, and Palestine is, a concern of this council. Israel is a nation-state, and who says so? When Ben Gurion raised the flag in 1948, after lowering the Union Jack, he said, "That's it. Israel exists." Yes, Sir Arafat did something similar approximately 20 years later. In other words, Palestine is a nation-state. It doesn't have to be given that status. It is a nation-state because the Palestinian people say that it is a nation-state. A significant precedent for this is the United States of America. As many of you, I hope, are aware, in 1777, the Articles of Confederation defined the United States of America. That was before the end of the War for Independence. Now, I have been to Jerusalem, Israel. Have any of you on this council been to Jerusalem? Ms. Strasburger, Warwick? The answer is apparently not. I have had an appointment at St. Cross College at the University of Oxford at the Center for Jewish Studies. I have reviewed the papers of Theodore Herzl at the Central Zionist Archives in Jerusalem. He was significant because he propelled political Zionism to the front via der Judenstaat and Alt-Nyolant. And in Alt-Nyolant, he was concerned that in solving the Jewish question by establishing a new state of Israel and Palestine, that there would be the creation of an Arab question, and that's exactly what has happened. I have taught modern Israel at the University of Pittsburgh. Can any of you on this council, can anybody in the office of mayor in this city make any of those statements?
Thank you very much. I will now come back to Naomi Mullen. You're still on mute, Ms. Mullen. And we don't believe it's on our end. All right, I will move on to the next speaker and continue to try Ms. Mullen when she's able. Our next registered speaker is Aikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Aikahana Hal Malkina. I am the Grand Inca of the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today, I would like to start with my reading, "The Steel of the City of Pittsburgh," in part. The steel of the city of Pittsburgh, black and gold as its colors are adorned, are from British Parliament, an examine to the farm from Sir William Pitt, to which the city is named after currently. He was the Earl of Chatham, who was Great Britain's Secretary of State, the Prime Minister of England, tied to the Byzantine Empire. This is just a reminder that we are still under occupation. The Delaware Indians, the Mingos, the Cherkees, the Chickasaws, the Seneca, the Choctaw, the Lenai-Lennox, the Blackwoods, the Albanswings, the Shawnees, to name a few. We are the Unkwee-Homewees, the Rosanowes, the people of the land. This is our sacred land, and it needs to be protected. There are simple solutions to the issues that we raise constantly on city council. Being forced to identify as a social-political construct is one of them. Being forcibly assimilated into a system to which we were never meant to belong. Now is the time for change. I employ city council to make some of these changes on behalf of the indigenous people, and not merely by an honorable day of remembrance for indigenous people. We need more than a day. We're looking for our land back. And as far as intimidation, please make sure that goes both ways. Please make sure that just as words and verbiage are protective for Jewish people and you won't allow them to be disrespected, please do not allow indigenous people to be disrespected, be it be someone's words or expression. This is our sacred land, and we will not be disrespected on our land. Peace, light, and love, and may these words resonate, lifting up the spirits of our ancestors. We are here, and we are here to say, in like Alakain, the light in me shall honor the light in you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Chief Pomaay Chakmam Yahalahi.
In like Alakain, the light in me honors the light in you. My title is Pomaay Chakmam Yahalahi, and I'm the Grand Council Member and Chief of Medicine with the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And as our Grand Inca so eloquently spoke before me, in reminding everyone that you are on stolen land, and you are occupiers on our land. And the very terms that you use to refer to yourselves speak to that. What is an occupant? What is a resident? What is an alien? What is a non-citizen and a citizen? These terms were created for immigrants, for foreigners, so that when you come on our land, there's a distinction between who you are and who we are as the aborigines of America. And then there was a stolen identity of our people. And many people presumed to be us, who are not us, pretend to be us, who are not us, have even written codes and policies and statutes in place to represent that they are us and they are not us. The Constitution is very clear. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 states, "And excluding Indians not taxed." Not excluding Native Americans not taxed. Not excluding Alaskan natives not taxed. Not excluding American Indians not taxed. Excluding Indians not taxed. And the Bouvier's dictionary, adapted to the Constitution, is clear. Indians are the aborigines of this country are so-called, because your ancestors called us a lot of things. They've even called us colored and Negroes and Blacks and African-Americans, and those are sociopolitical constructs, and we are not those things. We are the aborigines. And our continued rights are violated constantly, and especially by the Pittsburgh, City of Pittsburgh Police. So these are issues that we need to address, and we must address them, because these are acts of genocide. And just because no one has been charged yet doesn't mean that that will not happen. We are not going to continue to be isolated, demigrated, disrespected, forcibly assimilated, genocided, and eugenic upon our lands any longer. We want to work with you city council members. We want to work with the city of Pittsburgh. We want to work with all of the residents and the city people. And I do, in my everyday capacity, I work on many committees and boards and things of that nature, helping the city to be a better place for everyone. So help us to make it a better place for our people too as well. And I leave you as I greet you, in like Alakain, the light in me honors the light in you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Ajao Jai Chaknau Koine.
Greetings, in like Alakain. I am an Aboriginal American matriarch, and my title is Yajology Chaknau Koine, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all recall, Pittsburgh. My statement today is to invoke my people's constitutional indigenous rights. We are the original beings, the original stewards of our indigenous ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the Unkwee-Homewees, from our great law of peace. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and documents, such as the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the Adrikt, the Gendrick, House Congress Resolution 331. Northwest Ordinance, the Adrikt, the Gendrick, House Congress Resolution 331, 100th Congress Second Session, and the list continues. Therefore, all municipal officers, citizens, all other foreigners and immigrants have a responsibility to uphold their oath to the Constitution and are bound to the Constitution as well. The city is under the jurisdiction of the state. The state is under the jurisdiction of the government. Are you going to honor your oath to the Constitution, city council? Are you going to continue to commit 18 U.S. Code 2381 treason, 18 U.S. Code 1091 genocide, force assimilation, eugenics, kidnapping, child trafficking, discrimination, colonization, 18 U.S. Code 241 deprivation of rights under the color of law, 18 U.S. Code 241 conspiracy against rights? And the list continues of the nefarious actions against my people, the Aboriginal Americans. Uphold your oath to the Constitution. Uphold your age-antistipotes ancestors’ oath. Uphold your Slaw ancestors’ oath to the Constitution. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are the immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, and noncitizens under the jurisdiction of the United States, which is a corporation, AKA a business. You are on stolen lands and have been obtaining stolen resources from my people. Are you going to continue to walk in the footsteps of your many nefarious immigrant ancestors, such as Walter Aschweplecker, a physician, the first Virginia State Register of Vital Statistics from 1912 to 1946, a promoter of eugenics, a discredited movement nefariously pressuring state agencies to reclassify my people as so-called colored? The policy’s legacy was effectively to erase so-called Indians as an identity and has made it difficult for so-called Indians to gain state federal recognition. My people, the Aboriginal Americans, have been reclassified as so-called Indians, so-called colored, so-called Negroes, so-called Blacks, so-called African-Americans. My people are your Slaw and age-antistipotes ancestors’ saviors. We are not your abusers. Uphold your oath to the Constitution, and I do.
Thank you. I’ll go back to Naomi Mullen.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Law thrusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. My husband was a model Pittsburgh public servant. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies upon air. That is not advisable. The Public School Board of Education in Pittsburgh has zero for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school buildings remaining in our community. We do want the green space to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that the community approved apartments. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? WHO is the World Health Organization that is funded primarily from commercial income sources. The Gates Foundation invests in immunization and profits greatly from that. The CDC is funded by the Gates Foundation as well. The FDA is funded greatly by Gates Pharma. How can there not be a conflict of interest? Screw the WHO.com. Stop the WHO.com. In June of 2022, the detrimental Bon Air school building worsened into being a disruptive and nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to youth who broke into the building. Three of the seven had to be escorted out of the building. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been delighted with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proven futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Now that McKinley Park is no longer considered part of Bon Air, we want a replacement to be the green space. Open deals, not shady deals in Bon Air. Even current Pittsburgh public school employees have said the solution is to tear the building down and create the green space. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there’s anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You’ll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. And citizens, if you would get a pencil and paper, please, I have an announcement I would like to make. But first, I want to start off by saying that last week, I went to the South Side. We stopped at Burger King. And on the sign, it says, “A drink, that’s a dollar.” So I ordered that, and she was saying, “It’s no longer a dollar. We’ve changed it.” So I said, “Well, you have the sign there.” So as I’m asking her, “Why didn’t you take the sign down?” The man gets on the, I guess it was the manager, “It’s no longer,” I mean, he was very nasty, “it’s no longer, and it’s not a dollar.” So I said, “I don’t want nothing.” Okay. Now, I go to Popeyes. Early in the morning is the best time to go early, because sometimes that chicken is real hard. I love chicken. So I had Ms. Pat, 90-year-old lady, with me. We go to Popeyes. And when we go there, she’s ordering stuff, but she don’t know what she wants, and she’s ordering hot food, and I know she can’t eat it, and I’m saying, “That’s hot. That’s hot.” Then she finally looked at the young man and said, “Order me something. I don’t know what to order.” But I said, “Ms. Pat, you want this?” And she got it. And so as we walked away, Ms. Pat says, “You know, that was a nice young man.” She says, “Oh, I’m 90, and sometime I’m kind of slow.” And they say, on 90.5, on the radio, he was saying, “See something, say something and do something.” I seen it. I’m telling you about these young men, because I think Popeyes needed to have them two young men be trainers for some of the other young men that are coming in, because a lot of them don’t know. They’re not taught how to deal with people, or to listen, or to be quiet when people are talking, just like, “I know, as old as you are, you were told, but you don’t listen.” Now, another thing I want you to know is that 90.5 a.m. is having a fundraiser. They need, they will get $10,000, will be matched if they get enough calls by 6 o’clock this afternoon. Please call. I don’t have the money this time, but I do join, and I believe, because they stand with the facts. You understand they stand with the facts, unlike you. Now, I want to say something. Tim Stevens was up at our church. That’s my church. When I went up there and seen that he’s connected with it, I was saying, “I’m not coming back.” Tim Stevens has meetings, and he had the meeting about the police. He makes you write the question, then he chooses what could be answered, and that’s wrong. I told him that before. He said, “It’s my meeting, I can write.” And I said, “No, it should be that, read the question, let the people make the decision, not you.” Because I heard Carmen Pace, when she said, “They talked about the Union. They talked about this. They didn’t talk about what we want to talk about, our children dying, and you’re not doing what you should.”
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Mozy, and I’m winging it today. This is, for somebody who first grew up in Crafton and then moved to Mount Lebanon, right smack in the middle of Passover, I remember coming home, and I said, “Mom, you can’t buy me bread.” She said, “Why not?” I said, “All the kids at Hoover Elementary eat giant saltine cracker sandwiches.” But that was a brand-new life for me, and after graduation, I was handed a job to work at the Jewish resorts in upstate New York. And I tell everybody that I learned about Jesus more living and working amongst the Hasidic Jewish vacationers up there. And there’s just a sad air. I started going to the JCC in Squirrel Hill and in Scott Township, but at Squirrel Hill in the locker room, I sat there and I cried with a complete stranger over what’s happening right now. So right now, I just want to give you all thank you, and I love our city, and I love the love that we have for one another, and I hope that we can continue this embracing. I don’t know what this winter is going to have, but I know your job is hard, and I know it’s not easy, and sometimes I can be a little bit harsh and talk to you like a wicked stepmother or grandma, but I do appreciate everything that all of you do, and I hope this city continues to embrace our brothers and sisters in Squirrel Hill and Mount Lebanon who have family that may be missing or living in fear right now. We just need more love to go around, is all I can say, for everybody, no matter what your nationality, no matter what your faith is. Amen.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, that will take us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1937.
Bill 1937, Resolution Amending 164 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Loeb &amp; Loeb LLP for legal services related to real estate matters by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $400,000 over one year.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Madam President.
Can we have someone here to talk about this?
Leave our solicitors here.
How are you? Please, when you get a second, introduce yourself for the public.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Chrisa Kubiak, city solicitor.
Thank you. So there’s a little bit about this contract I want to know, because there’s been a lot of concern about what all will be included in the contract. But I want to know first, was there an RFP for the contract?
There was not. We did do, so legal services is an exception to the RFP process, but what we did do is call around to several different law firms who handle this type of work to get quotes and to see availability.
So you did a phone bid?
Yes.
Okay. And then, why were they chosen over the others?
They have an expertise in the areas that we specifically need. Both, they’ve handled these types of cases prior, and they have an expertise. One of their attorneys was with the IRS and their charitable division for 35 years.
Do you keep a record of the phone bids? I mean, do you have some kind of record of those?
It was a year and a half ago, so I don’t think I do have those records anymore.
What’s the typical timeframe that you keep those records?
I usually, I don’t know if I have a typical timeframe, but honestly, I have a notebook, and then once my notebook fills up, I throw it out and I get a new one.
And can council see the agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to see what else there is. And under whose license will they be practicing in Pittsburgh, in this area?
Mine, so they’ll be, yes. And they actually have some council that are also barred in Western Pennsylvania.
And is it possible to have them included in the, I’d like to talk to them directly and see what they plan on?
Sure.
Do it, okay. I know other members have questions, correct? Well, if not, I’m going to keep going. Okay, yeah. No, go ahead, go ahead. I’ll come back.
Counselwoman Strasberg?
Thank you. Well, I was going to say, you know, after our executive session and, you know, previous time at the standing committee meeting and answers, questions answered there, I’m willing to approve this today, or vote to approve this moving forward today. And I think it would be really helpful for some of us who still have questions about the financial strategy, the legal strategy and the financial implications of that legal strategy, to receive some sort of report back to council on a regular basis, whatever that looks like. I certainly, if we’re about to approve additional spending on additional legal services, that would be an opportunity, but I actually think a more proactive, whatever makes sense in the process here, I think quarterly, quarterly sort of reporting back to council would be very helpful to help us make sure that we’re all monitoring the expenditures and the tax receipts received on an ongoing basis, knowing that like, one snapshot in time is never going to tell the whole picture, but maybe over time, it starts to tell the picture of spending and receipts.
I’d like to do that. It’s a great idea. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Counselwoman Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. I just want to repeat some of the comments that I made last week after we had a pretty robust discussion about what the goals are here, and that looking through the ownership and tax status of our properties in the city of Pittsburgh is, should be literally daily housekeeping, but for 15 or 20 years, it really wasn’t. And we’re 15 or 20 years behind what we should have been doing, so that there are parcels on our books, I think as the solicitor described last week, that have changed hands and are now no longer in the possession of a nonprofit, and yet still are on these records. When I say records, I want the viewers to understand that if you’ve ever gone to like the Allegheny County Real Estate Portal, or you’ve gone and looked at other kinds of real estate records, they’re databases. And what we know is that, you know, garbage in and you get garbage out, right? You have to monitor actually the quality of what, who’s typing what in, and are those records current? It literally is a housekeeping activity that we are years out of date with. And if we had done it for 15 or 20 years diligently, we wouldn’t be facing this bill to approve today. And so I’m absolutely supportive. We are not going to be having to do this forever, but we do need to catch up and clean up. As I mentioned last week, I mean, even just looking between an address in our records and an address in the Allegheny County Real Estate Portal, you will find that there are not the same parcel number, and that’s supposed to be the kind of absolute record. Or you track down a parcel number, and it’s got two different addresses, et cetera, et cetera. So this is, this is the kind of data that we really need to be confident in, because it’s our revenue. It’s a substantial part of our revenue. And again, just kind of acknowledging that 15, 20 years ago, we fired half of the city staff, and that really is not without ramifications, and this is one of the ramifications. And so we’ve been understaffed in the Finance Department, the Real Estate Department, the Law Department for a very long time. I’m glad that we’re getting up to date, and if we had more internal staff, we probably wouldn’t also need to outsource so much in our Law Department, right? And we’ve all acknowledged that in so many different aspects. We don’t need to keep all illegal capacities in-house, on staff at all time, waiting for their opportunity, but this is one I’m happy to invest in. And as I’ve stated before, you know, if we even find, you know, $8,000 of under-assessed property, basically, that’s getting its tax exemption over 10 years, that’s $800,000 of revenue. So this looks like a no-brainer to me. Appreciate it, Solicitor.
Thank you. Counselwoman Warwick?
I just want to quickly, this isn’t really a question, but just to address this sort of ongoing conversation between like, whether or not we do this, or whether we go for the payment in lieu of taxes from the nine, this sort of conversation about, “Well, we should be doing this instead of this.” And I just want to clarify that, you know, when we say payment in lieu of taxes, or when other cities have payment in lieu of taxes from their large nonprofits, it is not payment in lieu of the taxes that you legally owe. It’s payment in lieu of taxes because you are a large nonprofit that doesn’t pay taxes. It's payment in lieu of taxes because you are a large nonprofit that doesn't pay taxes because of your nonprofit status, whether that be federal or otherwise. So the two things do not have to exist separately, right? We can, we can make agreements to have payments in lieu of taxes that benefit the city and also ensure that our, that the organizations that are getting, that are not paying real estate taxes under the, you know, charitable, I've forgotten. Yeah, under the charitable exemption, in fact, are charities and that the exemption applies. So anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? If not, second round, Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to know what their success rate is. Do you have anything?
I don't. I think that's, I don't have that information. I can look for it and.
Okay. And what is the likelihood that there'll be another increase and why is it doubling this time?
So we, it's been about a year since we've had them the last time. We expect that this is going to last us some period of time, but we're getting ready for the the appeal section. So what we've done is we filed the challenges. Now the counties come back. Half of them, they granted for us, half of them, they didn't grant. Some of them, we expect some of those parties are going to appeal. And so we're getting ready for that next stage of the appeal process.
And I hope that we're going to take off some of those and stop fighting the ones that we talked about being totally nonprofit.
I agree completely. And certainly, we have already narrowed down that field from that first 26.
And so I think that's it for me, but I'm thinking about some way to put some type of cap or something on so they don't come back again and ask for additional money, additional money, additional. Because I've seen that happen here before too. Not recently, but I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. For my part, one, I will echo Counselwoman Strasberger that the quarterly report would be really helpful for counsel. Two, just for the record, there also is a strategy, correct me if I'm wrong, to begin eventually bringing this capability in-house for the city.
Correct.
Okay. And then three, this isn't specific to this, but I have just curiosity. Homestead exemptions. Does the city check the status of homestead exemptions on property?
I don't know. They might in the Finance Department. That's not what we're looking at right now.
I know it's not what we're looking at right now, but in the same, in the same vein as nonprofits being challenged, the last time we were having this conversation, I sat and looked it up. There are units that I know have received homestead exemptions on them. However, those units are actually being rented out, sorry.
Oh, interesting.
And/or they have old new family members there and/or students living there. And so that's also a section of revenue that we're missing out on.
I think that's a good point. Thank you. Let me check with the Finance Director on that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Abstain. I'm abstaining until I have a chance to talk to them directly. Thank you.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to our new papers, the first being Bill 1997.
Bill 1997, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount Not to Exceed $4,450 Over One Year in Favor of Anson Burr in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage for Damage to a Parked Vehicle Near 234 South Millville Avenue From a Fell City Right-of-Way Tree.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2003.
Bill 2003, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011 Effective December 29, 2011 As Amended Entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2011 Capital Budget and the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2011 Through 2016 Capital Improvement Program By Reducing City Clerk's Neighborhood Needs by $90,859.95 And Increasing City Clerk's Office Modernization By $90,859.95.
Motion to approve.
Second.
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 Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers?
They're moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers have been approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. One new paper, Bill 1988.
Bill 1988, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements With the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $17,598,124 For the Purchase of Radios.
Motion to approve. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Cross. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 2017.
Bill 2017, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Peoples Natural Gas Company in the Amount of $24,947.2 In Payment for Non-Contracted Work on the Homewood Park Reconstruction Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our new papers, first being Bill 1992.
Bill 1992, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Wabash Street Formerly Walnut Street Laid Out in the Denny Estate Plan of Lots From the Center Line of Low Street to Its Terminus in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh At No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Second.
Second with discussion?
Could we have somebody explain what this is? Discuss it. Can we hold for one week? Motion to hold one week. Second. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Bill 1993.
Bill 1993, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unopened 10-Foot Unnamed Way Situate in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh At No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second. Where is this one? I can't see.
Any discussion?
Yeah, wait, one second, I'm sorry.
This one's in your.
I can't see, is it? Can I hold that too, please, until I have a chance to find out what they are?
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
My staff might have worked on it, but I wasn't.
The bill be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1994.
Bill 1994, Resolution Granting Unto Sports and Exhibition Authority of Pittsburgh Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Two Electrical Vaults, a Bio-Retention Tree Well, and a Planting Area at 680 Logan Street in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1995.
Bill 1995, Resolution Granting Unto Office Partners 23 Block G1 LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense A Bio-Retention Tree Pit and a Planting Area at 626 Washington Place in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1996.
Bill 1996, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Dedication of a Portion of 5,000 Forbes Avenue in the 14th Ward, 8th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh At No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Madam President, you want to make a motion to bring Bills 92 and 93 back to the table?
Yes, so move. Do mine. Second.
So we've made a motion, a second, to bring Bills, I believe it's 1992 and 1993, back to the table.
Good morning, everybody. Sorry about that. I'm Jeff Scellick, I'm the Deputy Director, Acting Director for DOMI right now.
Thank you. Could you give us, me a little update on what this is in District 2?
Sure. The first one, the 2023-1992. This is, the Associates is looking to vacate a portion of Waba Street.
Who is looking?
I'm sorry, the owner of the building. So what they're looking to do, what they want to do is use this property as a parking lot. We do not use it, we haven't touched it in 21 years. We haven't paved it, we haven't maintained it. So they want to use this as a parking lot for the employees.
Do you know who the owner is?
Low, L-O-W-E, Street Associates. Low Streets.
I'm going to hold it until I have a chance to talk to them.
Sure. Did you want me to follow up with them or?
Yeah, tell them to call my office.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, my mic was muted. I apologize, yes.
Thank you. Could we please have the bills re-read?
So let's begin with Bill 1992, Madam Clerk.
Bill 1992, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Wabash Street Formerly Walnut Street Laid Out in the Denny Estate Plan of Lots From the Center Line of Low Street to Its Terminus in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh At No Cost to the City. And Bill 1993, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unopened 10-Foot Unnamed Way Situate in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh At No Cost to the City.
So, Madam President, you just want to hold Bill 1993?
I want to hold, I want to hold both bills.
Oh, okay.
I just want to hold both bills until I have a chance to look at it myself. Thank you.
All right, so we brought it back to the table. Could we now have another motion to hold for one week? Both bills?
Motion to hold one week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1992 and 1993 will be held for one week.
And I do want to say thank you because you're doing a great job in acting and doing, thank you.
That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our one new paper is Bill 2000.
Bill 2000, Resolution Providing for the Designation of, as an Historic Structure Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known as Ella and Emil Keller House Located at 201 North Mertland Street in North Point Breeze in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The Owner of the Property Supports the Nomination and There Is No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing. That moves us to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasberger. We have one deferred bill, Bill 1980.
Bill 1980, Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 428 of 2023 Effective July 9, 2023 Entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation On Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh To Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement With Homewood Community Sports for Community Liaison Services At an Amount Not to Exceed $300,000 By Repealing It in Its Entirety.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just want to say, I think that we'll repeal this today, but then work with the administration to put an RFP forward, even if it's just for a week. I just want to make sure that we're doing, we're hearing whether it was, you know, one, yes, it was done right, no, it wasn't done right. So I don't want any question about it. I want to make sure we're doing it absolutely 100% right to make sure we're all in a good place. So that's it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 1989.
Bill 1989, Resolution Amending Resolution 413 of 2020 Which Authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget To Enter Into a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Relating to the Shared Operation and Administration of the City of Pittsburgh Childcare Quality Fund By Extending the Term Through 2024 At No Further Cost to the City.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
I just want to say again how appreciative I am of everyone that came to the post agenda and members as well to hear about these programs that the City of Pittsburgh and the administration are doing to support child care centers across the city. And we're really grateful that this money is moving. We waited a long time for it to get moving. And, you know, to summarize what we heard a couple of weeks ago, it's that the programs that were funded and supported, sometimes it was technical assistance, but funded or supported under these programs, raised wages for their workers, added workers, and added children that they're serving. And it's exactly what we need, especially post pandemic, when so many childcare centers are struggling. And we are, you know, hoping to continue this. At least I'm supportive of this kind of programming. I consider it economic and community development and I hope we do more of it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to thank you for your work on this and the Women's Caucus, you know, previously and currently. And Councilman Wilson and the others. We have a really strong, supportive council that really, really wants to do the best we can. But I think the one thing that we really need to focus on is making sure that there are incentives. I said this last week, I'll repeat it again. I said during the post agenda, I'll repeat it again, is that we need to make sure there's incentives for businesses to open quality childcare in the City of Pittsburgh. And I also would wish that we would start here in the City of Pittsburgh. A lot of our employees, we don't offer a lot, but if we offered quality childcare, that would be priceless to a lot of our employees and to a lot of you. A lot of you have children. I watch you struggling with the schedules that you have and trying to make sure your kids are in quality care. To know that you could check on them right here in the building or somewhere in the City of Pittsburgh, that it's a safe place. But I also think that there's a conversation that we have to have with Pittsburgh Public Schools. One of the things they do really well is early childcare. They do it really well and they actually, but it actually charge, like I think it's around $7,000 a year for that. So instead of, it's not free, like, you know, other education. So I would love to see us work with them in offering some types of free programs because they know how to do it and they do it well. But for early childhood and for daycare. So with that said, I just want to thank you all for your work too. And thank the administration for continuing and realizing that this is important for our entire region. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1990.
Bill 1990, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For 5321 Holm Street, 10th Ward, Pittsburgh, PA 15201 At No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1991.
Bill 1991, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in the Not to Exceed Amount of $48,450.50 For the Second Instalment of the 2023 Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission Dues.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendations. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. On Thursday, October 12th at 11:00 a.m., Council will hold an executive session on legal matters. On Monday, October 16th, Council will hold a briefing as relates to the Stop the Violence Grant with the first session beginning at 11:00 a.m. and the second session beginning at 12:00 p.m. Next week, Council will hold its regular council meeting on Tuesday, October 17th at 10:00 a.m. And a standing committee meeting on Wednesday, October 18th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker of Registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. Also, on Tuesday, October 17th at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1976 As Relates to the Inter-Municipal Transfer of Liquor License As Applies to the El Paso Mexican Grill. And on Thursday, October 19th, Council will hold a briefing as it pertains to Bill 0907 Smart Loading Zones Program And the Upcoming Changes With the First Session at 11:00 a.m. And the Second Session at 11:30 a.m.[1758.88]